And I'm.
Well, I wanted to share.
Not allowed here virtually and in person.
Double time.
Yeah. Did you notice that the YouTube algorithm like always picks your face for the title? Like every time for the YouTube video.
All right. Call the regular board meeting to order at three six thirty seven P M. This for Tuesday, March twenty one. We will start with the pledge of allegiance.
By the flag, the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We will start off with public comment. Two minutes, thirteen, fourteen minutes per topic. Could you please wish to speak, please state your name and your address. Just a reminder, this will not be an interactive thing between the board and the public. This is simply public comment.
Okay, my name is Julie Lang, three, six, two, Patman Drive, Somerset. I'm going to be speaking on item six A, and I ask for that to be brought up into the beginning of the meeting so we don't have to all hang out. That'd be great. Thank you. And I will go ahead. I will speak upon the trustee residency. I just want to bring up the fact that I was aware that the village attorney did not have a contract with the village of Somerset. I want to be husband now. But he's the one that brought the complaint, I believe, to the attorney general. And so I just want to make that known that he did not have a contract. I was on the board. And so I wonder if he has one now. Number two, I do speak to the fact that Mike Kapper is a resident in the village. He frequents public establishments, restaurants, and he walks home, and I know that for a fact. I literally cannot believe that the corrupt few have decided they're going to make a big deal out of this. He is a wonderful individual. He has always given back to this community, and he continues to give back to its community. Just because he has the wealth to own a home and an apartment and multiple businesses over his lifetime, you're going to hold that against him. He has a bunch of different things that he does for the community, whether that be, like I said before, he does the Christmas Village, the lighting of the tree. He has helped out a bunch of families. We had that big accident with a bunch of children that were involved in our community, and he gave back time and time again. So if you want to hold him for running for president to take the seat that Doug Lottie has, which he will successfully take, go right ahead, but we will fight you tooth and nail, not physically, but we will fight you for that seat because it's wrong what you're doing. Julie Lang, he's going to get that seat, and I'm going to make it my life goal that he becomes president.
Mike Kapper is two sixty Bade Street. I wish Mr. Health was here, but he is still listening, so we'll look right at the camera and talk to him. I think it's fair to say that the village attorney, Health Quest, does not want to be in his club. A few years ago, village attorney, Health Quest, worked to get tubing shut down for the master that he serves. It went through after a public outrage and a recall of three board members, but not much change because village attorney, Health Quest, still kept his position. If you're wondering who's master is, just listen during this meeting. He'll likely be the loudest guy in the room trying to intimidate others from speaking and making jokes while others are talking. Village Attorney Helpless without village board approval, or even so much as a police report, sent a letter to every village resident insinuating that I followed a village board member to her home and threatened her. All lies without any repercussions repercussions to the village attorney. In October, I changed my permanent residency and announced my intention to run for village board. The following day, the Department of Revenue Alcohol Enforcement officers showed up at my business at Kennedy's on a complaint from the village and even searched my apartment. At the time, I had a cot, TV, blankets, and sleeping bags. I explained that I was just in the process of moving, and village attorney, Helpless, used that in his report of the supposed unbiased league opinion. Within the next week, village attorney, Helpless, without village board approval, sent a letter standing out my apartment with non-conforming, and then I needed to apply for a conditional use permit. It didn't come from the village's building inspector who was hired and trained to handle the conditional use permits issues. It came from village attorney, Helpless. I spoke to an attorney as well as a well-respected Wisconsin certified building inspector. They both told me I didn't have to do anything because it's been in apartment since before the zoning laws went into effect, and thus his grandfather did. I explained that to detail in detail to village attorney, Helpless. He sent a letter, no letter back stating that it was his belief that I was non-compliant, and that I was given another two weeks to apply for a conditional use permit that I did not need. There was no code violation cited in the Wisconsin statute reference, just village attorney, Helpless belief. I provided him with ample case law and Wisconsin statutes to support my findings, and it was just his turn. Village Attorney Help.
Sorry, you are at two minutes.
Taking my time.
Village Attorney Helpless. Village Attorney Helpless has been the village attorney here since two thousand ten. Since that time, it appears that he's only filed a couple circuit court lawsuits against two people. Two against me and one against our former village president, Sean Weisen, blaming that Mr. Weisen stole thirteen thousand dollars in water. The numbers just don't add up, but his motivation does. My residency has been established by the Wisconsin Election Commission prior to me announcing my intention to run and certified by the village clerk when she put me on the ballot. My driver's license is here. My vehicles are registered here. I pay taxes here. I'm registered to vote here. I live and I work here. Village Attorney Helpless, again, without board approval, put it on the agenda to get a ruling from the League of Municipality on my residency. He put it on the agenda as a discussion item, but still had the board act on it in bad faith. Now, village attorney, Helpless serves several ministers, none being the residents of the village. The league works for the village, so to say it's an unbiased biased third party opinion is not accurate. The attorney from the league never reached out to me, canvassed the neighborhood, or did anything except village attorney, Helpless slanted opinion as fact. Village Attorney Helpless knows that the opinion is just an opinion, and it carries no weight. Village Attorney Helpless should let the community speak with its votes and not with his financial agenda. Village attorneys are supposed to advise the board, not script the narrative. If elected as president, my first order of business will be to replace Mr. Helpless and work with a professional firm and the elected board to clean up our town, our image, and get rid of the good old boy network that Mr. Helpless holds on to so tightly. The community understands what's going on here. Leave it up to the voters, Mr. Helpless. Stop serving the masters in your club. Stop wasting taxpayer money and let the community speak through their voices and their votes. Thank you.
May I take some other village presence on? What's your name?
Adam.
Adam Nash. Thank you, Adam. Julie Lang. Mike brought up something very interesting. Julie Lang, here sixty Pack and Drive. I'm a former village vice president. I was aware of Sean Weisen. The corrupt decided to bring that say that he stole water, which he didn't. The previous village vice president, who was that? I'm trying to think of his name right now. Let me pull it up real quick. John Melvin. You know, he was not a resident of the village when he, before he ran. The corrupt few annexed his property into the village to be able to run. And then when he didn't want to run anymore, guess what? You annexed him out, his property out of the village. He lives in the village, and you won't let him run. Isn't that corrupt? Isn't that interesting? So when people run against the corrupt few, you say they steal millions of gallons of water that they could never use. When you want the corrupt few to have somebody run to support your corruption, you annex them into the village to be able to run and annex them back out when they're done. Corruption at the finest. You're going to be the face of corruption. Well done, Doug Lottie. Well done.
Are there any other public comment?
Here's an ass. Sometime loves that idea. Not a great public speaker, but I can just attest to the fact that Mike does live here. He's here all the time. I work for him at Kennedy's. He's always up there judging, watching everything I do. Well, he is here literally twenty-four seven. When you don't think he's here, that's when he's here the most. I don't know what else to say. I live into his character. You know, I don't know the politics or any of the stuff that's going on or whatever. Been in Florida for a while, but when I move back up here, it's been on a downward spiral. Mess up, mess up, mess up. And to my surprise, the person that gave me a chance is my cavers, the guy that used to chase me around and give us curfew tickets when I was younger. I've messed up time and time again, and he's always there. Supporting me and giving me second, third, fourth chances. And he'd be a great elective official for the town. He carries votes on me, so very much always has. That's pretty evident. And almost everything he does, that's all I got.
Any further public comment?
I'll show you back. Six nine two one seven. I can vouch that I see Mike actually walk at least twice a week constantly back, you know, to the cafe that he lives there. I play pool league at Ronding and he's in and out. I mean, I run into him all the time. I always see him go there. So, and I live above campground. I know he lived there and, you know, bang, you don't still argue anything like that. He lives at the cafe. I can vouch that. I see him a lot.
My name is Russ Miller, and I'm just new. I just have a couple of questions. Is that I had a business in Minnesota. That's where I live was always a question. Six two six two hundred and seventy. And they always got hassled in Minnesota about my business, where I live and what I did, and the questions were, if you're in Minnesota, or if you're in Wisconsin, it's like, how do you get accepted to? If your children can go to school in Minnesota, are they Minnesotans? Are they Wisconsins? If you, you know, I understood my business, in order to have my business, I had to keep my residency there. So I'm just, I'm just asking questions about when you're trying to confirm the residency. What's the other side of that?
Any other public comment?
I'm gonna, I'm gonna.
Jonathan Williamson. Two nineteen Church.
So I'm just going to take this time for the shadow man some two nineteen church. All right. Everybody knows what's going on here is not great. We need to give a batch of voters. No world do we live in where anybody who's running in an election should make a decision or have an input on who gets to run in that election. This needs to be fair. We need to do better. Some of us need to do way better. This isn't an accurate representation of our village. Let's get it back. You guys have the opportunity to fix something that went off the rails here. Mike lives here. I've dropped him off at home. I've been out with him several times. I've gone to his fundraiser. I know he's there. I talk to him daily. If I needed anything, he's literally two minutes down the road. He is here. He's here. If you go to school somewhere else, you can't help somebody for that. Please do better. Thank you.
I believe we are beyond our foretelling for that topic. At this point, is there any other comments on any of the other topics on the agenda for tonight? You don't raise their hands in the I suppose this is our At this point, we will close public comment. Next on the agenda is a presentation for Shannon Donnelly for the Somerset School District. I know she did not make it tonight. She did leave, and we printed out flyers that are up on the end of the counter up there. If you would like to take one on your way out, you may do so. Next up is the minutes for February twenty eighth regular meeting.
We're going to make a motion to approve the February twenty eighth meeting minutes.
Don, you got it?
All right. First and second, any other comments or discussion? There are none, all in favor. Any opposed?
We opposed bringing forth six eight to the beginning. I would actually like to say that we should probably move five B one. So make a motion to move five B one, the discussion possible approval resolution approving an amendment to the project plan and boundaries of tax increment district number three to the next item on the agenda.
First and second for the comment thirty seven. There are not all in favor. Say aye. Aye, aye, aye. Any opposed?
Good evening, folks. My name is Josh Low. I represent elders representing that actually the villages where the municipal financial advisor. So we've been working with the village for many years on all things related to municipal finances, budget, levy limits, and most importantly, most important, taxing refinancing districts. So that's why we're here tonight to discuss the potential amendment to tax number three. And as well have my presentational.
All right, great. I think most of us are actually, I think all of us are here for it.
Back in Cleveland.
For you're all here for the money commission meeting, so.
The same price function.
That's exactly.
Mission. Yeah, we're all here for it.
It's up to you guys. How do you guys want to run?
He, he should still present to the full village board.
All right, got it. Thank you. Great. So I can be as brief or as lengthy as you get want. All right. So we're going to speak about taxing the district number three. So this is the second amendment to the district. Originally, it was open in two thousand five and mostly covers the downtown area of the village. The purpose of tonight is to add new territory to the district, and that'd be really part of the plan there. So if you look at your presentation, you can see the area shaded in blue here. That's right there. And then the secondary event are all the new parcels of the trying to bring in to the district and so on. So the reason that we're doing this is to provide new funding for land acquisition and intersection improvements in the district, the intersection being Maine at Spring Street. The goal behind this specific district, it was established as a blinded area district back in two thousand five, and the entire reason and rationale behind this is for economic development and revitalization in the downtown area. I mentioned that it's designated as a light district, which is frequently what's done for downtown areas that we're really trying to improve. The nice benefit of having a light district, that it can be twenty-seven years compared to the normal one years that you get for, say, a mixed-use district or industrial district. And the reason for that extra seven years is because the state recognizes that these districts have their own challenges, so they want to do the extra seven years to continually funding to pay off any projects in the districts. So I think that's a pretty quick overview from two thousand five, getting us up to now on that. Oh, I'm sorry, skip the slide. Taxing with basics. So I can just go over this quickly for the benefit of the audience. Taxing with financing, TIF stands for, sometimes though using words interchangeably between TIF and TIF. T I F means taxing with financing. The tax district TIF means the actual geography. So this is TIF number three. And any financing we're going to use for that, I might say is TIF. So basically, they tax. So the way a TIF works is that any parcels that are in existence already contribute tax dollars, right? They already paid property taxes before or after a tax or district is in existence. And that amount is what we call is the baseline. So that's kind of what's shown here in blue. All right. I've got a bunch of confidence, so I'm just going to take some and help you feel like everybody's off for a reason. My passion around. Okay. So after you establish a tax government district, that baseline doesn't change. So if there's a district that has one parcel in there, and that parcel gives five thousand dollars in tax revenue every year, that doesn't change or that. The only thing that changes is who spends that money. Before a taxing district gets established, that five thousand dollars gets split amongst the village, the local community, the school district, the tech college, and the county. Right? That's what happens before. So whoever owns that parcel pays their property taxes the same ways they always have. After the district is created, that five thousand dollars is now for use of the village and the village only for properties within the tax district. Tax increment district itself. Okay? So that's that five thousand dollars statement doesn't change. What happens after the district is created, a new stuff is built on that parcel, the set of parcels. That all that new growth there is counted in purple, right? So now we have new property tax value. All that purple now goes into the village to go and pay for those parcels or those projects in the district itself. So in this case, we're going to use that new purple growth to fund that property acquisition and those intersection improvements at Maine and Spring. And so that goes on for about twenty years. In the case of a light district, it can go on for twenty-seven years. Once the district closes, again, for two, three, in twenty thirty-three, all of that new value can now goes back to all the taxing jurisdictions, right? So the key point for a taxing of this is no one has made worse off by having a tax grant district because all those entities still get their same share of five thousand that they always have. And now there's more revenue coming in after the district has been created. Now all that higher level goes back to the village and all the other taxing transition. So they're better off after twenty-seven. Any other questions there? So we can go ahead and jump over to anticipated costs on this slide here. It's a read. So as I mentioned, what we're doing is trying to bring in to add the new projects to the district, being the land acquisition, which is prices that is four hundred fifty thousand, and then the intersection improvements. And the current estimate for that is three hundred thousand, and we think we can also have some grant funding there to break down the full cost of the village. So those are the intended projects that we have now in this district. And even after we have these as intended projects in a project plan that can be implemented in district, those are now TIF eligible, so you can use taxing dollars for them. Before you actually prove construction or acquisition for those projects using TIF dollars, they still have to be approved by the board at the time you sign the contract. So it's not going to be done today. But whenever you choose to move forward with those intersection improvements, probably in year twenty twenty-five, that's when you still approve it by the board. So today's action is just getting them eligible for TIF financing. It doesn't set them on the path.
One quick question.
Yes, sir.
You had mentioned that this is a blighted district, and that would put it out till twenty thirty-three, right?
Yep.
So on the expenditure termination of this TIF district three in a blighted area, it's got in twenty twenty twenty-two, twenty-seven on there. Is that on that next slide?
Oh, expenditure period.
Is that, is there, is there a reason for that versus the the closing?
Yes, there is. So let me catch you up on this next slide here. If there are any other questions on. Okay, great. So the next one is really focused on the increment generation that we get out of this district. So right now, you know, TIP three has not generated a ton of value at this point. Mostly the revenue that has come from into TIP three has become transferred from TIP two. So its current value is two hundred fifty one thousand. What we're projecting moving forward is that in year twenty twenty-four, we can build some new development upon some of the vacant parcels which we're seeking to acquire. And given the size of the parcels and its location, we're thinking about one point five million is a good estimate for that. And again, these are estimates. We don't have a firm development agreement with a group seeking to develop this purchase specifically. So both of these, the one, the one point five million and then the projected one million at twenty-seven are estimates of this. To answer your question, the expenditure period is the deadline for initiating any new projects and TIF expenditures. So that's always five years at least before the final year, the life of the district in twenty thirty-three, how you get to the year twenty twenty-seven there.
So we're looking at five years before, and we can't spend anymore in that.
Five years before the deadline.
Well, I'm saying five years. We're actually four years, twenty twenty-three.
Four years.
Twenty-four, we're looking at four years into twenty twenty-seven, and we can't spend any more money in that, in that TIF funds in that district. Is that correct?
Exactly. After twenty twenty-seven. So we're estimating a total of two and a half million to be generated between now and the end of the life of the district. Again, this is speculative. Maybe it happens in twenty twenty-four. I have in twenty twenty-five. It's hard to say at this point. Obviously, I don't have a crystal ball. When you sum up the cash flows from every year after you start getting new development between now and the end of the TIP in twenty thirty-three, we're projecting a total future increment revenue of three hundred thirty-five thousand of these valid projects.
That's estimating those projects going through, right?
That's right. The other thing, it's an estimate, it's an estimate in the future. It's currently known, is the village's tax rate. We're, it's sixteen dollars and eighty-nine cents per thousand right now. That's going to change over the next ten years. It's going to change every year. That's because the village's levy changes, and so does the school district, tech college, and the county every year changes. So we're going to be constantly updating this. We don't usually change them in a project plan, just given the fact they go up or down. We just want to pick a meaningless number. So we always hold a constant for cash flow like this. Any questions there?
We're collecting then sixteen eighty-nine per thousand on two hundred and fifty-nine thousand dollars worth of.
That's right. So right now, if you look there in your revenue twenty twenty-three, which is where we are now, since the current value is only two fifty-nine, two hundred, once you multiply that by sixteen eighty-nine and divide it by five thousand, you only get the forty-three seventy-seven. As I mentioned, most of the revenue that's available in TIP three right now is because it receives transfer to, which can do because it's the light industry.
And that will have borrowed money to make these movements? Or do we have the cash from TIP two that was transferred in from the TIP three?
You got it. So that leads me to my next slide on the cash flow page. So you're ahead of game. Thank you for asking that question. It's a good leader. All right. So the cash flow is really the nuts and bolts of a project plan, and this really varies up your projected revenues from the previous page and sets it up with the expenditures here in this spreadsheet right in the middle. The first thing that I want to draw your attention to is on the right-hand side of the balances. So you see that number four twenty-four, one ninety-one. That's what's basically in the district's bank account right now. That's the bond balance, four twenty-four. So we've got a property acquisition for this year of four fifty. So where's the rest of the money come from? We're projecting a general fund advance to meet the difference. So we'll bring from those funds from the village to be able to pay for the property acquisition this year.
So we're borrowing from our general fund into the TIP.
We'll have to figure that out. We'll work with Andrew to make sure it's done.
I'm just asking a question.
I don't know exactly which account, but funds of the village.
Is that the three thousand?
Russell.
Right, right, right. That advance gets repaid. We've got there's a line item under the expenditures, and that's, we really start to bring in additional funds for that in the future once more. Revenue starts generating from the new developments in the TIP. So that's how the property acquisition gets minus. The infrastructure improvements. To intersection improvements, we're planning to do a general obligation promissory note in your twenty twenty-five. Take on that debt so to get in under the wire for the expenditure period before twenty twenty-seven. We do that in your twenty twenty-five. That's a ballpark estimate of when that property might move forward due to the lag in supplies. So those are the two main instruments that we're discussing tonight, the land acquisition, property acquisition, the financing for it, and then the intersection improvements, which we're doing with that G promissory note in twenty twenty-five.
The promissory note, that's you're basically borrowing the money to do the infrastructure, right? And that's going to go just strictly into the TIP and be paid out of TIP?
That's right. That's right.
It's not gonna be with any general fund monies?
No, it shouldn't be.
So the if the the revenue that's being received in the TID right now, is that gonna pay back that that the the whatever we're pulling from the general fund? Uh, and and when is that gonna be paid back?
Uh, that should be paid back by year twenty thirty two. So if you see, there's a.
Thirty five thousand until twenty thirty two?
No, and start paying it back in your twenty twenty nine and that starts going through. Okay, but I mean, you can start repaying with as much as you have at the time. Uh, so you're drawing most of the funds down, right? Uh, in your twenty thirty three. As I mentioned, we don't have a lot of increment generation going on currently because the value is still over that two hundred four two thousand. You need new construction to start coming in before that starts generating more revenue, start paying that back.
And you can't do any do any additional construction until after twenty twenty seven, right?
Of infrastructure improvements.
Infrastructure improvements.
Development for private development, they can go on the vacant parcels. That can happen anytime.
But they can't say, say they wanted to pay, we would like uh to uh help finance the curb or gutter or whatever, the the sidewalks we gotta pack. You know, we couldn't do anything on that. That would have to be just regular infrastructure development by the by the developer, whoever that that would be working with that, right?
You can always do it. It just puts you potentially farther in the red without an understanding of how much revenue is gonna come out of that. So before something like that happened, I would really encourage you to get a developers agreement with a developer who would pledge to say, I'm going to build something and have that has a minimum guaranteed value, not what we documented in a legal document. They'll say, we pledged to create something of value that will generate enough revenue to reimburse you for those expenditures. So we would not recommend that you just take it on, do it without any of those guarantees.
And this is assuming that there's gonna be one point five million dollars in the development in the in this district?
Okay, and so we certainly make sure that that happens before you get to the promissory note. If not, then find some other source of funds in order to repay that.
What if the one point five million doesn't happen? Just saying what if, because what you know is what the future is gonna be, you know? What for? But if the one point five million doesn't happen, we borrow the three hundred thousand, right? And this rolls up and and uh uh now we're at a point where this tit is ready to close and it's in the red. We gotta pay that twenty, that three hundred thousand back.
Right.
Out of general fund, out of general fund monies or or uh where 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 does that get paid?
It could be general fund monies at some source of the village. You could also levy for it and add it to your tax rate.
But it would have to be paid some way, right? Because we don't have the general revenue coming into that TID district. Is that, is that right?
Okay, I mean, so what what normally happens, like imagine just doing a project that was not in a TIP. You'd issue debt for it. You have to levy for it. And then what you do, and it's just like any of the tax dollars. So if it's not in the district, the property taxes surrounding it, the village only controls uh you know about forty percent of that because it's not in the district, right? Every dollar that gets generated in taxes is a split between the tech college, the uh school district, right? So that's how it normally works. That's basically just the same mechanism. You just don't have TID dollars to pay for it. It just winds up being another project you have to let it for, just like you would.
Right, but these blues in that are already in here, they're they're that that's already tax dollars that are coming in, right?
A hundred percent. That's what's contributing to the two fifty nine.
So from that side as well, when he's talking about bringing the money in or having it. So right now, a lot of the stuff we're bringing in was from TIP two, correct?
Your revenues?
Yeah.
Oh, sorry.
It's currently in the fund outs.
Right, that's right.
So if you're in the same situation towards the end, say it four takes off or take five takes out. And those monies, is that able to go in, that funding able to go in to help resolve that three hundred thousand if nothing happened?
We would have to. Yeah, TIP two is closed, so. That's right. So four we can't do because that one's already labeled as distressed. Distressed districts can receive funds, but they can't donate to back out.
Sure.
TIP five would have to be amended to be a donor to this district.
I was just looking at other.
No, once we get to that point, uh, so we still have a couple of years before we're even gonna issue that debt in the first place. So ideally, you've already already be acquiring parcels here in twenty twenty three. So hopefully that will give some more time to understand what development is going to occur and give them time to figure out what that plan's going to do. But we wanna get it included in a project plan now, because once you get to twenty twenty five and you want to actually enact on that, they will already be ready to go.
And and you're at general estimating that you're you're stating here with the one point five million dollar development and drawing that revenues back. I know we're we're talking about future uh, you know, tax levy rates and everything like that, but um, when does that have to happen in order to be at a positive cash flow of, I believe you said, three hundred and thirty thousand net at the time of merger?
Uh, we've got a cumulative balance of thirty six thousand by the time the district closes.
So that's based on, I'm trying to.
Oh, I understand what you're saying.
I'm trying, I'm trying to find that number in there.
Sure, sure. Uh, the future value increment going down to the page right here is probably the best way to focus. Okay, we're talking about the three thirty five, right? Uh, so that number assumes the one point five million gets constructed next year and the one million gets constructed.
Twenty twenty four.
Uh, right, that's right. So something gets constructed one year, assess the next year, values established next year, and then the year after that, you start receiving revenue. Okay, so that's the way that this cap.
Regret of construction schedule, we got one point five million dollars worth of construction up to get it assessed in that grid of a time.
No, it constructs next year and then it's assessed in twenty twenty five to start generating revenue in twenty twenty six. So when you sum up all those cash flows, that's how you get to the three thirty five, the total revenue.
So I have some questions for Bob, but he answered all the questions right there.
Yeah, anyone wanna entertain them all?
I'd just like to make a motion to approve an amendment to the project plan and boundaries of increment district.
I don't incur in second.
First and second on the table, any further comments or discussion?
I just hope that we're able to get all that we need in that district. Uh, sooner rather than later. There's a lot of pressure on everybody for that.
But you just read the.
What's that, the twenty twenty three dad too?
I'm sorry.
And that's add resolution to.
I amended for add the resolution beginning of my statement.
The rest match that, yeah.
I'll say that.
Okay, any further comments? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries on there.
Great, thank you very much. Thank you. Absolutely.
Thanks, Josh.
Nice job, Josh.
I'd like to make a motion to item six eight. Okay, next. Uh, most of them do, as we need to move the next item up, any other comments or questions? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? I will take myself out of the discussion due to any potential conflict of interest. So I will not discuss or vote on this. I will remind everyone that this is for the board. There is no interaction with the public. So if anyone has any questions afterward, you can stay and talk to someone after the meeting, but we won't take questions during the meeting for any further items. Alright. Um, so next up is discussion possible approval attorney general complaint and or related follow up actions on the independent third party legal opinion or on trustee residency.
So what we're here to talk about is there was a letter rendered by the Wisconsin county municipalities. I think everybody has seen it. The because I don't, I don't know that um we're gonna get to a decision. I don't know. It's our decision to make. So the recommend date or the the next option or our next step, I guess, at this point is to forward the complaint onto the attorney general. And that would basically answer um any questions that are gonna come up relative to the election, who wins, who can be seated, so on and so forth.
Yeah, I think based on our discussion that the working session, um, I think um I'm gonna make a motion, and I can make like to make a motion uh to authorize me and the village legal counsel on behalf of the village board to file a verified complaint with Wisconsin attorney general under Wisconsin statute, statute section eight point two eight. To have the attorney general investigate and bring a claim against Mike Capper regarding him being unqualified to hold office.
I'll second it during discussion. A motion's on the table in third discussion.
Yeah, I I don't believe that we should be spending village taxpayers' dollars to uh address this issue anymore uh with the attorney and uh um, if somebody wants to uh address the issue with the attorney generals, I'll give them, I'm glad to give them the phone number. But spending taxpayers' dollars to to sort this matter out is frivolous in in that regards because anybody can contact the uh attorney general uh and at their leisure, write a letter, whatever the case may be. And if the attorney general feels uh the necessity to uh investigate and and uh take action, they can do so. So I'm adamantly against this because of the, we've already spent money towards this and uh and uh I've seen it kind of play out and I just don't really believe that uh this is a something that needs to happen from a board. If the, I think there might be some conflicts in regard to that. That's just my opinion. But um um I think uh if if the attorney general and anybody out here wants to, um, you know, lodge a complaint, there, feel free to do so and let the attorney general raise, uh, you know, investigate it and uh and act accordingly uh rather than it coming from this board uh to make that decision. Uh, you're a resident, you're entitled to your rights uh under Wisconsin law. And you should exercise your rights to make make a complaint and and they have an obligation as an attorney to to do so. So I I'm not in favor of uh of of spending additional monies. We had the same thing with uh with uh Sean and I was against that. Uh, we let it play out and uh we eventually got the money. Uh, so why don't we just let this play out through the the means that you need to um utilize and that's you contacted an attorney general yourself and making that complaint?
Any other discussion?
I'm actually on board with Donnie in regards to it as well. So I think if the individual wants to make the complaint, they can definitely do that. But us as a board should not be doing that, using taxpayers' money. Anybody else?
Motion on cable. Yeah, you can hear the uh. So there's motion, the motion's on.
Motion has been first and second.
I don't, are you gonna make me read that again?
No.
Okay.
So most has been first and seconded. Is there any further time of the conversation?
So what the so what's the difference for somebody other than us ask them or if somebody out in the audience were to ask them, I don't understand?
I think the difference is, isn't it the village attorney doing it on our behalf, which is paying for it? Yes, as the village residents. So I think that's the difference. So a private citizen can make the complaints and obviously they can make the complaint without paying for an attorney fee and all that stuff. My understanding, so. Yes, I think it.
Are you there?
Yeah. Anders, are you uh?
Hello.
Yep, sorry. Could you repeat that, Josh?
Oh, uh, I think Chris was just asking what's the difference between us as a board doing it versus a private citizen making the complaint? And I was going on the limb and understanding that us as a board making the complaint would involve you with taxpayer money, doing that on our behalf versus a private citizen making the complaint where there's no attorney fee or taxpayer money being involved.
Uh, that that's correct, yep.
Okay. So that would be the difference. As my other statement, I I think that a additional uh input on this subject would be good since most of us do have, uh, whether it be good or bad dealings with the individual running for president, Mr. Cafferty. Uh, so we don't have any biased opinions in the matter and all that stuff. So we can have a higher authority to give us that guidance in regards to um, the decision that needs to be made.
So but you do feel the decision doesn't need to go over the attorney general?
I just, yes.
Well, they're just.
But not through us.
Don't approve the mechanism.
Correct.
So you don't wanna make sure it gets there. You're just hoping on a citizen to file it instead of us.
Either a citizen or myself after this meeting filing a complaint as a private citizen of the village. So here, but I don't think we should, as a village board, should be spending any.
I personally think that we gone as far as we can possibly go with this as a, as a board, uh, we've gotten in my opinion, we have gotten uh to a point where we should, if somebody wants to take this on, then they should take it on. But right now, we got other business to attend to and and an agenda to roll on. And I I'm opposed to this motion. I think that spending additional taxpayers' money, I think we spend enough already. And uh, I just uh think that uh anybody can do that and it doesn't cost this village or the taxpayers any additional money. And so, uh, you know, quite frankly, if uh uh somebody wants to take that up, by all means, uh, you come see me afterwards and I'll give you the number to the attorney general. But um, I I don't believe that we should be spending taxpayers' money to to get this done.
Any further comments?
Alright, there's a motion. All in favors, signify by aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any votes?
Nay.
Nay.
I abstain. Motion carries.
I turn wanna make a motion to limit the amount of time the attorney will be spending on this to a maximum of a thousand dollars so that uh we're we're holding back uh what it's gonna be for.
I have to be on a different reading, not on the agenda.
But it's on, it's on uh opinion, attorney general complaint. And what I'm saying is that that part of the uh the complaint is that he should only be spending a thousand dollars on that. That's still part of the agenda.
I mean, I don't care. I'm just wanting to make sure that we get to do that.
That thumbs up from Amber from.
No.
Yeah. I just wanna make sure. I I think that's, I think that's within the um, I think that's within the scope of the enge- agenda, the intent of it.
Okay.
I I I really don't think that's a problem, you know, just, you know, we didn't do the same thing regarding the Sean Weiss and complaint. Um, I remember there was a a question about that in filing the complaint uh and gain it served or having uh having the court fees, uh, it came to under a thousand dollars for Sean. And as you recall, he voluntarily agreed to pay the thirteen thousand five hundred dollars to settle that, so. So, yeah, I think I think putting a cap on it is is fine in terms of putting together the the verified complaint itself.
I just wanted to make sure.
That's total, you know, what. That's total, you know, putting a complaint and I mean, follow up and everything is, is that this, this village, uh, and the truck taxpayers should only be on the hook for. No more than a thousand dollars. That's my, that's my motion. A little bit of attorney visa, a thousand dollars.
Any other comments or discussion? Good. All in favor, say hi. Any opposed? Alright. Next up. Meeting reports, five A. Discussion.
Somebody can see the thing in a video or.
Uh, and oh, and just for the village board and, and Felicia, what I'll do is I'll just create a standalone file on this. So you can, you know, neatly see what, what gets billed. And so it stays within that thousand dollar cap.
Alright, so five A one discussion possible approval, growing wings, utility extension plan and actually do we need to cap just that and. Bid authorization.
So there was some, there was some discussion. And last week.
It doesn't say.
About the road. And I, and we talked, I think we talked to Lenny and we're somewhere. So we're all good with that, right? I just wanna make sure we're gonna be.
Can we? So.
Are we on, what are we on right now?
Five A one.
So, yeah, so the comment that was made, you, yes, three lots, you can't have a private loan because you run the risk of having a landlot situation. But there's gonna be easements built into this, this is why it's temporary. Uh, because there's gonna be, um, future developments with the, and so the boundary is, excuse me, two, three and four is essentially what you're approving. And then there's gonna be some modifications depending on setbacks. Uh, where those easements are because they have to be exactly on that, so that includes the water man, sewer man. And uh, the drive so that we can assure that number four doesn't get landlocked.
So there are, there's going to be utility, utility easements or. Because we had talked about that, but there wasn't originally in that developer's agreement, I think afterward. Under's in mention that.
Yeah, so, yeah, and they'll come, that's why this is, so the reason this is preliminary is the hope is. San Francisco will um, allow this. And for them to buy a lot, lot two and three. They need a PID, a parcel identification number. But they don't have that, the bank's not gonna. Give them any money to build this, so that's essentially.
Yeah, and that's actually. That CSR is actually under plan commission. Just, I mean, they're all interrelated, so it's a good discussion. So just, oh, I'm sorry.
I was like.
Um, so I'll attract them.
Did you, did you share?
I can't. Famous last words, right? Most disabled persons free and shared.
Alright, there we go. Like diesel, kinda gas.
Slow burn, yes. It's a slow burn.
So, I do believe you, you should have received the plans in your council package, correct? And so. Essentially what this project is. Is the, the, the extension of sewer and water. Um, from the Legrander thirty-five intersection. Down on the short length of one eightieth avenue and then over on Parents Street. To, to provide. Services uh, food growing, it also includes a temporary grinder station. Uh, that, you know, convey the wastewater, you know, because it'll leave the, it'll leave growing wings by gravity. To a, a temporary sump manhole where those grinder stations will pump it up into the.
It's like a lift station, right?
Yeah, yeah. So. Um, essentially these are the plans, and you have details. Uh, this is a grinder station, you know, essentially that'll be E one pump. That will, will suck a sanitary manhole. And, and you know, that, and that'll provide the storage for that grinder station upon. The wastewater, and then once a regional station goes further downstream to serve the entire district. Then, you know, that. That temporary pump will be pulled, will, will fill in that some, with that sanitary manhole. And the one, and the, the flow from growing wings will continue. By gravity down uh, further to the south.
But you guys are, the guys are comfortable with these, you've got multiple ones of these that they have to service or is this some of the contract kind of deal? Or who maintains these?
Yeah, so we did verify that these are pretty full group. Um, they're still in the debate of putting one or two in, just in case one fails, we have a backup. They're fairly. They're not that extensive, so.
Um, something can do ourselves, so. To change it, yeah.
No, they would both be in, okay, they would just, if one fail, we're just. Already to go again, so. Um, and then generator, would this be a, a portable, we would ready trailer of the lost. So. Yeah, we're looking at a lot of. Um, ways to budget engineer this, I guess, because it's, it's temporary, so you don't wanna. A lot of them, but there's necessary line that put it.
You know. We can't, you know. You hate to do temporary items, well, in this scenario, you have to because for one, it's cost prohibitive to extend the. The uh, gravity sewer much further south and then put in a huge regional list station that'll only see, you know, a thousand gallons per day. Uh, and that'll cause odor control issues because everything else, because it'll take so long to pump it up, it'll take a month to get it from the. You know, so that's why we have to do something temporary till something more significant goes in. And so this.
After you get two or three and then, then it would be more significant, is that what you're thinking?
Yeah, then, yeah, I mean, you could utilize this until you can't. And then you do the regional one, you know, so if, you know, hotels goes in or something like that, then you'd have to put in the regional.
So those three that they're gonna go in, it probably still would serve them just.
Oh, absolutely, yeah. And there's a significant, you know, where we're having a hot over a, a single one or duplexes. Well, if the thing fails, there's all that storage and all that eight inch gravity pipe. You know, so you have that kind of fail safe, but then it's the question is how quickly can you get a replacement on and. You know, it always happens on Christmas Eve, right? So then, you know.
I like the, the other backup.
Yep, exactly.
I was more concerned on this one, on a page, uh, the sheet PP two. The last one over there where it says private utility designed by others, is that? And then, and your, uh, your private, private utilities coming down there, but there's nothing in there that says anything about easement. You need that there or, or is that gonna be something?
We'll, we'll get, we don't, to build this, you know, we, we've got everything we need to build this, so we didn't wanna complicate these plans. You know, the developer will put in the other improvements, they'll submit plans that we'll review and approve. You know, it's just coordinating.
That's good, that's gonna give your, your public, your easement, right?
Yeah, and then we'll have a development agreement and I'll spell it out that. They'll show, you know, we'll have all those things in place before they build. And, you know, I, I believe the last we checked with, uh. You know, their intentions to have this, this thing go online next, next spring. Uh, so this.
Aggressive schedule.
Does this, does something to do with the extension going out? Is it gonna play a part of that or is that nothing to do with that?
If that regional list station that I just referred to.
That will.
That will serve ten five as well.
Okay.
There's, there's casing pipes that were put on underneath sixty-four there, so that, that ten five can flow by gravity. Cross into that list station.
So all of that planning, pre-planning, at least to this point has. Has been with that in mind?
Yep.
This expansion, okay.
And that's similar to our. I support grinder station for, I don't know, fifteen years, and we put that big regional one, and once we. Maxed up the capacity and we overbuilt that to, you know, take into the floor. So that's. Kind of a. You know, utilization of, of a tip this, but again, as you can put some horsepower behind it. What you need to over, overbuild for.
And you know, these easy ones are quality grinder stations, you know, grinder pumps. And, because, you know, a lot of times, there's, I know of forty year old temporary list stations, you know, it does happen. And so you wanna make sure you're putting in quality, and we don't anticipate that being the case here. But if necessary, you know, it's, you know. And it's, uh. You know, it's like any other kind of piece of equipment that should last fifteen years or whatever.
So a question was raised at the uh, work session. Uh, about access to that and. Whether the street was. A shared use was county was, or I'm sorry, town in town.
We'll jump out of the.
So, so, hold on, so approving this extension here is basically approving this base, uh, you know, based on what presented in front of us, right? And send it off the bid then.
Yep, that, you were, we're seeking your approval, uh, plan approval and then authorize us to go off the bid. And then we'll, we'll bring those numbers back to you at a future meeting.
When do we? Do we wanna try and have this done by?
Yeah, this, this construction season. You know.
On top of everything else, aren't they doing that road this year, the whole road from the Ranger all the way down Main Street two?
But this is really, you know, this really doesn't. Impact, other than, you know, that, that day or two where they have to cross. One eightieth there. Um, you know, that's, that's essentially it, and everything else is in the whole of ours, we're trying to limit our. But again, it, it needs it for, it need, we need it for, you know, for growing.
No, great, I'm just. It's gonna be like a whole new Somerset after, after this year, it's exciting. I got faith in you guys. I'm excited.
And was it clear?
Probably beat them.
Okay.
Five K or something.
You know, we got two of theirs. That go, uh, any other comments? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Next up, discussion possible approval, mill and overlay on one hundred and ninetieth Avenue proposal.
It looks like this is something that's necessary to get done. It is.
You live on that road, do you wanna vote?
The question is, how soon are they gonna be able to get to it? I mean, they gotta wait till road lim, you know, limits come off and everything like that?
When process off, they, they said that they can do it.
Yeah, they will be able to.
Give them materials to do.
You just need approval for us to spend that, now you said that might, might come out of, uh, the, either.
Or, or we're gonna verify with Sean to see if we can pull it out of.
So we're gonna need that, yeah, we're gonna need that road. You, or that tid that's going in there, so that, that's unnecessary.
It's a combination of things, right? It's number one is even regardless of the tid is for destruction, because that's gonna be the, the main through there.
Absolutely.
And so it's the width of it, it's the. Everything is stop signs or whatever, flashing light or something at the bottom.
Well, yeah, is this, this will be. Top of the line, this is where great, this is will be like a main street, there will be like a, a main road.
Is it gonna be paved with?
We're all cross section on, so we're not adding the curb there.
On the north side, I think, okay.
Is there any utility adjustments needed?
It might be, it might be a manhole or, in fact, there's not a manhole, there might be one gate valve that needs to.
Are we doing that work then? That if there's a manual or something, that's not in their bid?
No, no, that's in their bid, yeah, they're.
Uh, okay, I'm, I just, I'm just reading what they say, so.
Yeah, so he walked it, that was the price, so he knows what's there.
You're comfortable with that number?
Yeah, I mean, the counting was about thirty-three thousand. And.
But, but there's no guarantee on it.
Right, no.
So, so we can say thirty-three thousand, but we can put the residents in a, driving over this, you know.
Yeah, no, um. Monarch is gonna be a little bit better product. Their bidding is a little bit better. Ties improving, but.
What, what timeline did you talk to them about getting this done by?
As soon as the process is over.
Before Memorial Day?
Um.
The reason I'm saying that is because this bridge is going down, right, around Memorial Day, right? We gotta have it done right, you know, around that time.
Yeah, I'd say middle of May.
Okay, I'll make a motion to approve the monarch, um. Uh, proposal fifty-five thousand two seventy-five and brain the guy gets done before. Yeah, the middle of May.
On the second. First and second on the table, further comments or discussion? Uh, just a quick question, with the name of one ninetieth Avenue, that's a joints road, correct? So township to the north. Us to the south.
Yeah.
That's a U flat road.
Past the Grand.
And it, and it is. It is the township, is it, townships from, the grounds are all the way up?
Yeah, so it's all religion.
Just wanted to make her. Also, on behalf of. Any other comments?
Go on the record for that.
Alright, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Carries.
They're gonna get the Granger two, right?
Wow, hang on, that's what we're. Alright, so next up is discussion possible approval, safety training and consulting proposal.
Yeah, you know, this was basically just for your awareness that public works and. We do also have uh, uh, an annual training with all staff of the police department. With our safety consultants, so primary reason I put this on here is to make you aware that we, we are safety trained. Um, and they do go to our facilities and do a markup of any was, or should violations. If Ocean does for some reason show up. We make a phone call to them and they just send us and they take over for us and. And just do anything there. Um, we're a small fish in the water, but it can happen. Um, so again, just basically clear awareness and then, yeah. Um, most of that's all done in house, right? All of it, yeah, well, somebody misses it, they'll have to go to a different community and stuff where. Is, they do probably ninety percent of. Municipalities, um, in Minnesota, we're the only one in Wisconsin. Definitely take.
You need a motion to prove that or has it been standard just a roll?
I would appreciate a motion if you guys wanna make it.
I'll make a motion to prove the safety training by a safety sure consultants, uh, for five thousand one hundred and seventy dollars and thirty cents.
Right, for a second. First and second on the table for other comments or discussion.
That's budgeted, right? That was all set in the budget, I think, in that one, which, which.
Yeah, and they, uh, you know, just for your awareness, in two thousand eighteen, that was twenty-three hundred dollars. Twenty twenty-three, it's. Fifty-two hundred dollars, so about a hundred and seventy-five bucks a year, they increase it, yeah, a couple of guys.
Alright, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Much carries. Next up, discussion possible approval, pay applications number seven and number eight, the wastewater treatment, uh, fund improvement.
Yeah, so these were, uh, presented and discussed at your workshop. And a application number seven is for two hundred and six thousand eight hundred and thirty-four dollars. Asking you to consider making a motion to that effect.
So.
I'm second, just making note. That's the, your number seven.
If anybody, the pay application seven, just all.
Any other comments or questions on that? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Number eight. Uh, similarly, uh, we're seeking your. Approval of pay application eight for two hundred and fifty-nine thousand. Seventy-seven dollars and thirty-five cents.
Randy Crow, make motion approved.
First and second on the table for the comments or discussion.
I just, this was all approved and discussed at the, at a workshop meeting, so um everything is in order, chunks of it, yeah, but.
All in favor, say aye. Next up, discussion possible approval bid award for Main Street Bridge and Expansion During Replacement.
So bids were open March eight, uh, we received two bids. London Construction and Zenit Pick. Uh, London was low with. One million, six hundred and eighty thousand, eight hundred and twenty dollars and ninety cents. Uh, they also had um alternate one, which was the uh, the chain link poly coated fence. And uh. You know, that would be an additional hundred and six thousand, three hundred and twenty-one dollars and thirty-two cents. Uh, alternate two was, you know, the more uh decorative uh chain length fence. And that was.
Thirty percent more.
Thirty percent more, a hundred and thirty-one thousand, three hundred and seventy-one dollars. Uh, we are, because these, they come over estimates, uh, we, we, we're continuing to have discussions with London to kind of. See what, what they saw versus what we saw and do some potential value engineering to see if we can't. You know, if uh, if it was just, you know, what the issues were, so we'll be. You know, asking your consideration next month. So at this time, it's more just for informational purposes, unless you just want to go forward and do it, but we'd rather. Um, see some additional information and see, see what, see what, you know, come with a better recommendation at your next meeting.
So you're gonna go and back and get additional clarification on certain things, maybe, you know, get a, you know, recapture something that they might have missed.
You know, you know, maybe we've.
You mentioned utilities were coming in a little high, right? Is that gonna, are they, London doing the utility work too or?
Their subconsultant, but it's all kind of interrelated. We, we do have to understand what's bridge and what's.
Okay.
Sewer, you know, so those costs are allocated.
Everything is in the bucket.
Yeah, in the right bucket and all those things, so there's a lot of discussion that has to.
All right, is that, are we gonna be in any kind of time constraints uh be approving it next month versus this month or what?
No, we have a contract to allow sixty days, okay, and it was March third. So April third, May or eighth, excuse me, so you know, like May eighth, so that you, you can do it in April.
And they'll be ready to start, maybe in June first? Or after a piece of things.
We did request after this.
Yeah, it's a good request.
The biggest thing. Is the utilities and sewer especially, uh, where we come forty-five percent over.
Yeah.
And that's, that's a little bit of a concern.
Um, does that get allocated from the?
Yeah, that doesn't come from the bridge.
So it goes to the water and those.
We're putting a lot of stress on the sewer budget. Is, now we got a four million dollar sewer improvement, we've got utility extensions going up to five, so we're paying for that. Um, so there's some things that we really want to sit down and sharpen a pencil, talk with the contractor to see if. What then, and if it comes down to it. We might end up talking to our bridge guy and say, what about postponing this here? And um. If that comes to be, I, it might be the best recommendation.
I don't know, that's gonna work out too well, everybody.
Well, well, that's, that's why we need to get, get more information.
Tell me that before, well, that's.
But what is that accomplish? We put it off for a year, right? What is that accomplish? It's not gonna get cheaper. Well, you know, it's, it's sure, they, the two, you know, we had two bidders for one. And they both are using the same sub for the water and sewer. So, you know, until we, you know. You know, there's. About, you know. Yeah, oh, that, and it, and what's nice is, is there, there's subcontractors, same subcontractor that working on the, the Churchill project. So there's continuity there.
Help, help me understand what putting it off for your dog.
Uh, we can alternate some materials in our pipe with C nine hundred instead of ductile waterman, if we wanted to choose to go that route.
You know, maybe they just say they're just, what we expect is, you know. You know, they have to drive a candidate in it or some, you know, there might be some reasons why, and there's some value engineering, we can get input from London and say. Well, you know, if you, if you go with these hangers, you know, the, it just. You know, the current supply for whatever you spec now just. Isn't there and, you know, it's causing some issues.
I still don't understand why, what putting it off for your dog, I'm not saying it's not good, I just don't understand.
Basically, it comes down to this increasing sewer rates astronomically.
If we put it off per year?
No.
If we don't put it off per year.
Right, yeah, and try to go back and look at some. Alternate savings that we could choose to do, uh, maybe we don't do stainless steel in case there for the insulation, we do. Um, the poly. Whatever it's called, instead of that, there might be a big, big cost savings there, what with this, what with the stainless steel, just.
You're gonna be able to get all this figured out in a month's time, um.
Well, yeah, I mean, we're talking with anyone right now.
You know, part of the problem, we didn't have it progressed this time, I was gone, Bob's gone, you know, now we're back together, so. We can have these, you know, we just started these talks.
That's why I'm asking if you're, if you guys are able to.
Yeah, we will.
Uh, to put it together like by the work session, you know, because I, I really am not a big fan about putting this thing up, you know, I mean.
No, we are weak.
I think that's just the thing, obviously ideally is it gets done sooner than later, we have it, everyone's kind of. I don't want to say ant up, but everyone's kind of ready for it to be, to go through, but I do understand that when we talked, I was like, yeah, the pricing came in way up, so. Yeah, they have it at one point six one eight, what was he estimated before? It was like one.
One, two or one, three or something like that, yeah.
So. Two to four hundred thou, or two to three hundred, four to three hundred, sorry, four hundred thousand dollar change. But just saying from that standpoint, so if you look at the delay, just from my standpoint being. Within manufacturing and stuff, it's okay, availability of materials available, labor force, availability of that. If something changes a little now, suddenly are there more people available? Where you have crews that are on the work versus having one or two that you can find.
I don't know how it's gonna be cheaper when, than. It all being done right now, using the same people that are already in there, doing the, all the Churchill road stuff. I don't know how you're gonna find it being cheaper, and they're gonna be able to buy all the material at the same time. We gotta go back and look where this fifty, thirty percent increase is coming from, there has to be a mistake somewhere.
You know, there's some areas that a hundred ninety thousand for uh temporary sewer. And then a thirty-five thousand dollar charge to hook the water made up.
Oh, on both ends, so it's seventy thousand, so you have.
Wait, we buy the pipes, but we don't get them put together, isn't that part of it?
You guys have work to do.
It's a little. We're, we're collecting information, but to your point, Todd, earlier, and, and you've read it as, you know, nine times out of ten, you rebid it, you don't get anywhere. And that is a, that is a concern, we'll, we'll be in the same place, but until we have all the facts, you know, we just.
Okay, my concern is gonna be, what have we bought this year or last year that's cheaper this year?
Right, right?
So the projects that we get pushed back.
Well, and, and by not doing it. The biggest conversation was pushing out the sewer and water portion of it, getting the bridge repaired on, seeing if we just. Then go out and do, there's a lot.
That's not gonna cause a shutdown. They can do the underground, who would have been probably be more money.
So that's a lot of verification of our staff or engineers to see. What all our options are, we just want to know all our options, okay, what is all, all, all look like right now, they're a little fragmented, so we want to put everything together and say, okay, this is, this is. This is, this is.
Yeah, that's, that's our goal, I mean, yeah. I, I think in a few weeks, it's, you know, that, you know, the discussions are ongoing. Well, you know, I just, I'd be curious, I'm, you know, uh, is there any initial reaction with the? The, the chain link fence for a hundred, initial hundred thousand or the decorative one for a hundred and thirty thousand? Well, see, but the fence, the, the bridge is in a different, it's a different account.
Yeah.
Right, that's, that, that money that.
The bridge comes in just like we thought it would be.
Right. Um, I, I don't know, I, I guess we'd like to see it and see, see the costs associated with each one.
It's, I'd see that.
You wanna see what they're proposing with those ultimates?
Yeah, I mean, there, there, there's a, there's details in the plan set, are we gonna have the only one like it?
So, so the bench, the bench chain link poly, polymer coated is a hundred and six thousand, three hundred and twenty-one. We'll bring it to the work section.
We'll bring it to the work section.
So at this point, do we need the table or do we just want to say no action taken at this time?
Look like that.
Okay, uh, motion to table and this, uh, first, second on the table.
Table is to the word second, yeah.
Yes.
I, I only have one comment that, and I think everyone probably shares that same sentiment, is I'm concerned, this definitely makes. Me very concerned.
That'll work it out.
Anomaly.
Okay.
A lot of times like, whoa, 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 we need to go back and look at people and say, well, yeah, we'll just verify.
I, I agree that, I think it's Donny that said, we need, we need to go forward with the bridge repair, right? If we gotta wait on the other stuff, that's possibility, I mean, that's.
I'm all in favor of moving table on this to next to the uh work sessions, they are. Uh, next up, discussion update on West Central BioSalts Phase Point Five Receiving Tank Project.
So Jim just didn't update if he just wanna review it, I don't know, he's on there.
Has anybody heard anything as far as uh, they said? No, 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 I mean, uh, the, the bacteria testing.
They inoculated yesterday, so I don't know exactly what that means, but.
Inoculate? That means that they got together. They got together. We'll know if we got solid tomorrow. What's the, what's the timeline to starting the um, the clean water fund loaning? I know we got time into next year, but is that, are they gonna be getting that paperwork out so we can start that project?
Did Ellers talk about, did you talk to Ellers about it or?
We have, we, they are, I mean, have those reverse.
Long as you guys show, you know, I mean. You got, you got it on, it's on the list. That's all I care, I know it'll get taken care of it.
Any other discussion you need to get on this?
Are we going to need to approve anything on this? If it's already been approved, I mean.
So next up is uh, five B two. Discussion possible approval growing lanes, see if them.
Are you sure, that, are you sure?
Uh, I can't share. So, yeah, so in order for them to close, they need a, they need a PID number in this preliminary, you know. The intent of this preliminary is to provide them with that.
Yes. Um, so the road, no, I'm gonna jump to the road, because it's a hot topic, but, so. You're correct, and if there's three parcels, you cannot have a private road, because.
Without a very.
Would be a landlocked situation more likely occurring. Um, so. What we're looking at doing here is the black dark outline there of lots two, three and four. That, that's not gonna move, but those interior. Boundary lines, so the dark line. Separating lot two, lot three and, and lot four and three, those might be moved. Uh, a little bit, depending on some backs and whatnot. Um, so it's not, it's not. It's not a final document, but showing is internally, there could be some moving around, and that's really why it's preliminary. Uh, there will be an easement added into and whatever other encumbrance, so I, under the sun. On the call here, so that'll be infused in the developer's agreement, we'll also have a maintenance agreement with the. Fire hydrant, because that'll be a private fire hydrant, um, at the end of their water line. That's really necessary for. Welfare and aesthetic. Fashion for flushing. We will maintain that fire for a couple of reasons, one, it's probably not ever gonna flush by them. And they agreed to that. We don't wanna flush it, we don't want to flush it, and if it breaks. We know it's broken, um, and then we have another private fire hydrant at the hockey rink and. Every year that somebody would drunk on it and break the operating nut and look to us to fix it. If there was a mess, so we will enter into a maintenance agreement on that. Um, but just to reach that, that's, that's getting flushed, and the fire department shows up for a fire that the. It was. Um, also for. Um, there are also ready for insurance, make sure that thing is. It's. So. I, that's really kind of all. Things involved. Uh, so they're not gonna have a private road to the three parcels, but it'll be a private road with an easement, so it's not being. Necessarily dedicated to the public, would it be a driveway versus a road then? Potentially, yeah.
A road drainage and utility has been already ready. You know, so. You know, Bob can drag down it. And then Bob can, you know, turn the, turn the valves.
Do we have to blow it?
No, okay, no, might not stumble the road, and that's why, you know, it's like setting the road, there's a, there's a little couple grading. Places on there that it might be nice for them to shift the road over ten feet or three feet. That's why we're kind of wanna wait for that easement to be adopted after.
So we should hold on this until we get that out?
No, you, you're gonna prove this, because then they can get their PID and then we can move forward, the purpose of the property, the bank won't close on the property.
So this is basically to give them PID. Okay, and so we could put contingencies on this, you know, I mean, that, 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 the developers, you know, the easement and everything like that.
So talking about the other road, just to confirm, that's our road, Parent Street, that one eightieth. Street, that name, or is it a joint road? If it's a joint road, do we need permission to do something to it? Do we have that permission?
Yeah, Congressman should have. Yeah, the utilities, we're not disturbing the road.
Okay.
All the, all the utilities that parallel parent will be in the boulevard. Your boulevard.
So right now, there isn't anything that. Did you mention something?
The driveway.
We're gonna be all right, the topic I read here today too. And I think we're just gonna put it on the next joint even agenda and just.
I, I'll do that.
That's a really good idea.
Main Street's discussion?
It's actually a hundred and eighty.
Hundred and eighty?
Yeah.
Is it Avenue Street?
What it says right here, one eighty at that?
So Parent Street ends right here. And this map shows Parent Street going all the way up to the curve, but it actually stops right at the box. We just, we don't know what we're gonna do with it, we just have to thank David at that.
Should I put a, should I put on the discussion on one eightieth Avenue's ownership or just this one eightieth Avenue?
Motion on the table.
Randy Crowe, second.
Now, for a second, any other comments or discussion?
Uh, these CSMs going to, to them, we, if some changes on it, it's gonna come back to us again, right? I mean, with the developer's agreement, everything.
Any other comments or discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye. All right, more carries. Next up, new business, seven A, discussion possible approval, approval. Somerset Public Library Board of Trustees Appointments, Patrice Edgar for village resident. Uh, representative, sorry, and Alexander Bell Somerset School Representative.
Are you making that a motion? Well, I'm reading out what it was.
So, um, I will make a motion to appoint, uh, Patrice Edgar to the Somerset Public Library. A board of trustees as a village representative. Uh, any other comments or questions?
You can do it together.
I didn't know if we could, just because it was two different positions.
You can just say as presented.
Okay, I will amend my, uh, motion to say as presented. Any other comments, discussion?
I'll keep their service.
All right. All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Welcome back to the Board of Trustees, yeah, the trees that here in the Alexander Bell. Uh, next up, we have full session. Being the closed session as per, it's nineteen twenty-five, one E, deliberating and negotiating specifically, that's by public business. Whenever competitive bargaining reasons required, closed session, plan for, you know, Peta Brothers, plan for screaming of capstone and land purchase. With Apple River, Camp Town. Is there anything to update on this? So we will ask anyone in. I'll make a motion to move into full session. And this is roll call. Uh, Josh Hack. The body, I. Bonnie Kern.
Hi.
God Lee.
Hi.
Chris Brandon.
Hi.
Brandon Groan.
Bye.
And that is everyone, so motion carries, we will go into closed session at eight and nine P M.
Works and torches.
Okay, so we are taking no action in closed session. At this time. Uh, we reconvene to open session at eight twenty P M. Uh, next item that we have is village water and sewer bills.
I review these, everything that's in mind, Brandon Crowe making motion to approve, uh, water and sewer bills as presented.
First and second, um, do we have, but, uh, the dollar value or just say it for that, since it's on it? Just wanna verify.
Question, state of Wisconsin court finds and surcharges.
Back to the court.
Any other for comments or questions? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries.
On current made motion to adjourn.
First and second on the table, all in, excuse me, all in favor, signify by aye. Here is, we are adjourned at eight twenty-two P M, thank you very much.
Thanks all, have a good one.